And want to be sure that we're respectful of people's time. I'm going to try to keep our work session to the normal time, right, so that we can end and start the regular meeting on time. So let's go ahead and start with our meeting review, agenda review. All the normal things. We have. Yeah, just all the normal stuff, a couple of items. We had unfinished business item. On-call services contract for the historic commission. Who's going to talk about that? Who knows about that? Is that? Was that not in there? Am I on the wrong one? That was last one. Oh, do I still have the last one plugged in this? Now I got all the other ones, right? I guess I just didn't delete that one. Sorry. So we do have then a bunch of new business items, resolution approving an RTP grant. And I would assume Wheel Beautiful is that Chris talking about that or is that Daryl? Yeah, Chris. You want to tell us anything about now real quick or? The the real quick version?
Yes, we've actually attended the financial workshop, which was a prerequisite to getting started on the RTP grant for Wheel Beautiful. The next step will be the resolution authorizing the mayor to accept the grant award and the to DNR and that starts the process.
Cool. Anybody have any crescents for Chris about that? If not, the next one is a council plan approval for the terror school, the library they're building, I think, right, Mike?
That's right, Mayor. There's a proposal for a new one acre lot behind the terror school in Zarenby. The uses on the lot posed are a recreation field and a library. The original plans had no utilities going to the library. I'm sorry, power, but no water going to the library. I believe that's changed based on public safety requirements. But there are. It went to the planning commission last month for approval of preliminary flat and concept plan, the recommendation on the concept plan. And they voted to approve unanimously both. So it's a new lot. It would hold a small library. There are certain public safety concerns that still need to be worked out, but they're all solvable. They're in conversations with public safety about fire hydrant location provision of water, possibly sprinkling the building, access for vehicles, and then a non-public safety concern, but still something that will be confirmed at least in the building permitting process is just access to bathrooms. There are no proposed bathrooms in the building. But there's a distance requirement. Building code review will solve that.
Okay. Do we have any questions about that? The drawings were in there in the packet?
Yeah, Mike, I did have a couple of questions. I know when I read through this, it said, I guess they're going to open in a soccer field.
That's right. Recreation fee, yeah, soccer. I don't know what they'll be. Yes.
Yeah, it said something about no water, no restrooms. They got to run to the library, I guess. How does that work?
So the library itself would not have restroom. This is immediately behind the school. So for school use, the students using it would have access to the school, the school restrooms. It's within by my measurement. Now, I'm not a code expert. This will be reviewed by the building official plan reviewer. But by my measurement, they're easily within the walking distance required. If not, they'll have to build bathrooms or they won't be allowed to build the building.
Yeah, after looking at it, I think the walk is a little excessive. You know, I played a little ball growing up. And when I was growing up, you know, that's when people were passing out from this crazy heat that we have. So that's my big concern. If it's going to be astral turf.
What, like drinking fountains or something?
Well, yeah, you got to have some kind of liquid. It's, you know, this, other than the last two days, we've gotten a break, but you know, we got these crazy temperatures.
Right, right. It is immediately adjacent to the school. I have not looked into locations of drinking fountains or precise location of the bathroom. Again, the bathrooms themselves will be a part of the building permit review.
Okay, because I mean, a high school is coming, correct?
That's right. That's right. The eastern portion of that school property, yeah.
So why not just put in all the adequate infrastructure to start with? Like, I guess. Tell me.
So I think because of public safety, they are going to have to run water to the building. It wasn't part of the original plan, but last I heard, the direction they were going was sprinkling the building. So if they do that, it would make sense.
Doing what sprinkling?
Sprinkling, like fire sprinklers.
Okay.
Sometimes those are required. Depends on distances from fire. Actually, I'm not.
No, no, I understand what you're saying. I'm not concerned, but I realize that they're going to have to meet the fire code standards. I'm just, what I'm worried about is the children, you know, I coached for 15 years and that there actually are some parameters that you follow. And having access to liquid hydration, all this other stuff.
Absolutely.
Way I read it seems like I guess somebody hanging out in the building and he gets to come back and give them.
I think that field is again directly adjacent to the school, so it'll be as close to the school as it is to the library. So I don't know that adding water, drinking fountains at the library building, which I'm certainly not against. I don't know that that provides you anything that just going back to the school doesn't provide you.
Okay, I was just going off of what exactly it said here, but what would be available and what would not. So that's, that's something.
Good. Good concern.
Just on the I just had one comment about the 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 private use, public use question just raises. Obviously, ceremony community is very, very cognizant safety around the children and so on. And that that idea of public use and access to bathrooms is just something that just want to make sure gets thought about in terms, which is just an issue of how they're going to register it. But it struck me, given the focus on the bathrooms in this. That the public, private and access to bathrooms all raises questions for any educator.
Yeah, the details will have to be worked out. There was some discussion when the application first came in that it would be accessible to the public. When we started talking about the the users needing to use the school bathrooms, that came into question in my mind. They may not exactly use. I don't know. We could hear from the applicant on on their their current thinking on that. But those would, that would, that would certainly be a concern. And again, a part of when they're getting their building and the location of the bathrooms, who would confirm the hours of bathrooms are available and.
Right.
There are also, there are also some public bathrooms, though, in the model one building that is just down the way, right? So there are public bathrooms relatively close by as well. Because it's a pretty common thing nowadays to have those kind of, you know, libraries accessible outside during the weekend or whatever when school kids aren't around. Any other questions on this one? All right, the next one is to Mike's point too, right? The building officials will make sure that all of the building code issues are resolved. This is just a zoning question. An IGA with Kuwaiti County, that's on the T-Sloss, right, Robbie?
See if my mic's on. It's on the Floss, the floating local office of sales tax is same thing that Fulton County was doing. All counties are doing because last year there's a question on the ballot that asking about if they want a reduction in their property taxes, uploading local ops and sales tax. So now the referendum goes before in order to get the, and Rick can correct me if wrong, the the 1% tax that the cities will get as part of that process. Because we have part of our city now in Coweta County. The only problem is they're going on a 2020 census population, which our population was basically two people. I think it was like Steve Nigren and ceremony properties LLC or something like that. So now we have population there, but they're not looking at that current population. So we're, Rick and I are going back with the county to see. Not that it's going to be a large amount, but whatever percent we get, maybe we can get, maybe the county will give us a little piece of their pie. That's what we're trying to do.
We can buy everybody a bottle of water.
Okay, ask them.
Yeah, of course.
Since right here, if this is approved by the voters, city is projected to receive approximately 0% over the next five years. Continue reading on, says they intend on collecting close to $220 million. What is the purpose? We don't even have a water policy. And my biggest fear is the more I look into these IGA agreements. We're setting policy is what we're doing. Is what we're doing. And you allow certain things for certain developers. They can always come back and say, well, you didn't give me this, but you gave him that. Signing an agreement that gives us 0% of a pie out of $220 million. Hoping that I guess you can have a conversation with the county and get some money out of it. I don't see what is the, what is the purpose of that at all?
The the purpose is this. So those T-Sloss local option, sales tax, all of the the option, sales taxes like that are distributed based on population. And at the last sentence census, we had no population in Kuwaiti County. So based on the rules by which that thing is distributed, we're not qualified.
We we opted in, as you remember back in February, to the Floss. So we have to be part of this intergovernmental agreement because we did choose to, the council voted to opt into this. So we get 0% because as the mayor said, we had zero population in 2020. Now there's 2025, we do have population. That's why we're arguing, we're having a discussion with the county saying, we get it. But they're applying this across all cities in Coweta that we're basing this on a 2020 census. Now, they can argue that their 2025 census, they have more people too.
Right.
Everybody will because it's five years later, but we just want to make sure that we're in the game. So.
We don't have a water policy.
So it has nothing to do with T-Sloss, though.
Yeah, I don't know what the water policy has to do with. Yeah, this is lost, floating local ops and sales tax, but this with the Coweta, we don't, we don't have any water services with Kuwaiti.
They currently have water. Water currently coming from County County?
Yeah, we don't have any agreement with Coweta for water services.
We don't have water coming out of Kuwaita to anything in the city. No.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, don't you think that we should establish some sort of water policy or ordinance?
I don't get the connection. Pardon the pun, the connection.
I mean, we've got all those policies. We just don't buy water from Kuwaita and won't because our stuff is coming from Atlanta. Atlanta watershed at the moment. It's not a water issue. This is only a tax issue and I hope that at some point we will be able to get some tax collected because the assessments will come based on population that's.
And it's the same thing with Sloss too, because, you know, we we participated in the Sloss because we don't have a Sloss in Fulton County, but they do in Coweta, which we'd love Sloss. We participate in those conversations, but they're like, we get it. You don't have the population to to get Sloss, but we still, we still remain in that relationship in those conversations. So because one day, which is today, we do have. So the next time we start talking about Sloss with Coweta County, we're going to get some Sloss dollars.
Right.
Can I, can I just ask just a question for clarification? I got, I was just trying to figure out the, I kind of that same question of like the 0%. And then it's a five-year term. So so in 2025, based on 20 you're going to have to help me. 2020 census.
Redo the number.
Figures. But so the the figures won't get redone until 2030, which is five years away, but it only has a five-year term. So is the, is this just to sort of get us a seat at the table for discussing it or how I just, I was just hung up by the dating, the dates.
Yeah, and you're right, because the 2030 census will happen later. And so then the next issue that comes up.
This will expire before any.
Right, right. But we're still going to, just like all the other cities, they'll go, maybe not on the official 2020 census, they'll go on a new updated census because they have to. They can't wait 10 years. Because all the other cities, whether it's Harrelson or all the Sharpsburg, you name the cities, Noonan, they're going to say, look, our population is not the 2020 census anymore. Same thing we're going to say.
Okay, so as a policy, just to clarify for people, I'm sorry about the microphone. Just to clarify, then it doesn't matter that it expires before the next census reporting because as a matter of policy, you guys get updated figures along the way. They re, they potentially, I guess, re-figure the amount we get.
Yeah, because we're going to have the, we're all going to have the same argument, which is different than local office sales tax. I'm sorry about the static. We need to. It's frustrating for sure. But yeah, it's different than lost. This is a Floss. But it is, it's there. They decide because this is a brand new, all the other cities, and I'm getting emails every day from other other cities and counties throughout the state. A lot of people are asking, hey, what are your, what's your county doing? What's your city doing? Because they're thinking this unfair. The county is taking a lion's share, which counties do take the lion's share. And a lot of counties, the easiest thing to do is base it on population. Instead of based on point of sale or based on level of service, you know, because you got county seats like Noonan that might say, we generate the most property, the most taxes, we should get a larger share. County says, sorry, we're the county. They're going to take a larger share. So we just break it down by population and our population is just, it doesn't register right now. But to your point, we're in the game, we're in the conversation. We, I continue to go to those meetings in Coweta County, even though we only have a little small portion of our city there. I'm engaged with Coweta.
Thank you.
We'll have another census, but you know, they're always behind. So we're going to get that number to 2032.
Right.
Because that's how the census works. They were even more behind last time because of member COVID. They couldn't even go out and count people, so.
So basically, we're six years away from receiving anything off this.
Yes, but we're still going to say, hey, because the county, I've talked to the county manager and they say, look, I mean, talk, maybe we can give you a cut of our portion, which might be, I don't know, a thousand dollars. It's not going to be a bunch because we don't have a lot of, a lot of folks. But we do have property tax there. We'll talk about that today.
And they've asked us to do this so that they can at least have that conversation with us. Any other questions about this? Next one up is the millage rate, Robbie.
Oh, yeah, same thing. We got two, one public hearing tonight, and this for the millage rate. We're setting the millage rate. We talked about that last month. I gave you kind of a a prelude to it, and that is 8.2. It was fine when we tested it. It's when we go live, things go a little bit crazy, right? Cut mine off. It's me. I don't know. Sometimes they tell us to put your phones on airplane mode. I don't know if that helps or not at all. We don't know. But yeah, 8.2, what we were recommending setting millage rate, we're at 8.2 right now. It came back for the our county, Fulton, Fulton County has 8.21. So technically it's flat. It's a flat millage rate. The interesting thing is we're talking about Coweta County a little while ago. The tax digest last year was $2 million. The tax digest this year is $17 million. So the tax digest, people aren't muted on Zoom, by the way. The tax digest went up, which means that the property values, because people are living there now, we got houses there. So their millage rate, the calculation came out to be instead of 8.2, it's 7.565. That would be a rollback, but we're setting it. We can't set two different millage rates. We're setting one millage rate, 8.2. So we're having three public hearings because of that. And so the millage rate, whether you live in Fulton County, whether they live in Coweta County, you live in Chattahoochee Hills, your millage rate is 8.2.
What was the rollback rate for the rest of the city? Do you think? All right.
Okay, thanks.
Awesome. Next up is, anybody have any questions about that? Sorry. If not, next up is 25-035, which is the UDC update. Mike?
I don't plan to say a whole lot about it. You all have seen it many, many times. We've had many, many meetings on it. Had a first read last month. Yep, consultants are here if anyone wants to talk through any, any parts of it. But it is what you saw a month ago. We have a planning commission recommendation six to one for approval based on the public hearing in the planning commission meeting in July.
Do we have any questions?
Yeah, on page two of the ordinance is written. Doug Cloud in the zoning meeting noted that that percentage under D1 was agreed on as 15 and it's reappeared as nine in the text. So you'll want to amend that.
They ended with nine, I believe.
There was a discussion in the zoning meeting. Counting the conversation from the what did, what did you hear, Mike? Because I heard that zoning agreed to 15.
Right. So I think Doug thought he had that memory. There may have been someone else. The process that we came out of the that last meeting, the first read meeting was that our consultants were bringing forth the text as, as it was, and if council members, anybody wants to make an amendment, propose an amendment, you propose an amendment to the, to the ordinance that the consultant has recommended. So you can certainly do that tonight as you're all making your motion to approve.
Yeah, we had a whole conversation about 15%. I think I said 14 as a concession below 15, but the, but we had a whole conversation about that. And then the zoning board.
We ended up at nine in the conversation.
Well, and it should.
We did. Again, I don't know what planning commission did. That's what we did.
I don't, I don't, I thought we ended at 15.
It was.
And it should be noted that although our consultant has settled at nine through various questions, DM, DMV has said that they need a far larger size to be viable. So maybe we should think about getting them on.
What?
What? I'm not sure I understand that.
But let's, go ahead.
No, it was 9% based on our responses and even the responses that we sent to you, council member of where we answered all of your questions from your letter. And so we kept it at 9%. They had further conversation and agreed to pass it as was written with 9%. So they didn't put any additional conditions or any other changes to that. That's exactly how they voted. It's off of the 9%. But you're absolutely, Mike is absolutely correct. Anyone can have an amendment this evening to change the 9%. Yep. But can you explain what you mean by DMV as?
Just the amount of land preserved in that discussion.
So they asked to preserve more upfront? I don't know how much they're preserving, but I'm saying, did they ask they want to preserve more than 9% at the beginning of their process?
Not at the beginning.
And let's be.
Okay.
By the zoning, the minute it's zoned.
Exactly.
We have this process. We put conservation reasons on it. Part of the development. And so when we talk about what's going to be preserved when it gets zoned, we're talking about.
Correct.
Okay.
I will say this, you know, one of the, one of the discussion points that was supposed to take place in this whole agreement was the one per 39 acre rule, I mean, one per 20 acre rule. We were told that would be discussed during the comp plan. Told that, you know, I was sitting in the same room with everybody else here. For some reason, every change in here is for developers. And yet we're not, we're not discussing the people's rights is what we're doing. So as far as I'm concerned, this is still an incomplete document. What we agreed to discuss and what we agreed to fix or come to a compromise on, this was one of the subject matters. And it's just being completely avoided altogether.
I'm sorry you feel that way. We actually had four joint work sessions with council yourselves, excuse me, and the planning commission where we went through each item line by line. And when we did get to the 20, it was understood that that would be a conversation at the comprehensive plan. And I just need to address what you just mentioned about how this is easier for developers. There's not one piece of this code that we're proposing today in front of you that makes anything easier for a developer. There's not one item that is any less strict than what you started with.
Thank you for that.
Basically, every zoning change we've ever made since the beginning has been.
Right.
With all due respect, Steve, Steve knows he's not always been happy with all of them, right? Because everyone has made it more difficult.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on this?
No.
No, thank you for that.
Thanks very much. And then the next one is the rezoning of the Bukart property and Mike?
Right. Yeah, yeah. So again, this is something no surprise. We've heard about before. I'll go ahead and run through all of the, the information I've been. The overall land is 7,848.25 acres, proposed to be rezoned from RL Rural to HMMU mixed use hamlet. There are 70 parcels total. They are roughly generally on the east side of the Chattahoochee River, all on the east side of the Chattahoochee River, south of Campbellton Fairburn Road, which is Highway 92. And generally north of South Fulton Parkway, although 700 acres of the of the land are south of the Parkway. The the land on the future development map is in the preferred agricultural and rural residential area. The area around the Parkway is in the preferred village area. And there are a couple of small pieces that are in Campbellton Crossroads and the RICO Crossroads areas. They have 10 miles of Chattahoochee River frontage. Much of that river frontage is floodplain and all the land within 2,000 feet of the river is regulated by the state, the Metropolitan River Protection Act. And all that will have to go through any development within that 2,000 feet of the river will have to go through a review process by the state at the Atlanta Regional Commission before it can be developed. The applicants have broken the, the large property into four planning areas. The east planning area, which is where the first phases of development are proposed. That's where the, the current equestrian facilities are. The west planning, I'm sorry, the central planning area, which is just to the south of that along the Chattahoochee River, where the the big bend in the river is, the S curve. The west planning area, which is again farther south, closer to the Parkway west of Campbellton Redwine Road. And then the south planning area is the land that's east of Campbellton Redwine Road. The applicants have been through a DRI process, development of regional impact. They provided the sufficient detail in the central and east planning areas, but not for the remainder. They'll have to go through the DRI process again before they're allowed to develop on the west and south planning areas, which is basically half the development. Similarly, the concept plan that is written up in the conditions only covers those same first two areas. So they have to come back for, for more approvals before they can move on to the second half of the development. Let's see. The the proposal, again, 7,848.25 acres. The, they're allowed to develop 30% of that as a mixed use hamlet, which is 2,358 acres, which means that they would be leaving at least 5,493 acres as open and civic space that are to be preserved. Their proposal also includes the application of 536 TDRs that would come from the well, doesn't necessarily matter where they come from, but they have reserved rights on the the reservoir property and another parcel owned by Mr. Bukart. And with the application of TDRs on that property, they would be preserving over 6,000 acres in total, which is 22% of the city's overall preservation goal. There have been a number of planning area, planning efforts already on the property. I've run through them before. I'll just, I'll just name them briefly. We can go into detail on any if you'd like. Chattahoochee Hill Country Model Sustainable Village, which is an LCI study. South Fulton Parkway Access Management Study, which includes GDOT's approval of access along the Parkway of a new intersection along the Parkway between RICO Road and Cochrane Mill Road. Chattahoochee Hill Country Greenway Trail Master Plan, which covers four counties in total with paths along the river and paths connecting to Cochrane Mill Park. The Trust for Public Lands Riverlands Study, which includes some of those same trails and also other river access. And finally, the Historic Campbellton Crossroads Framework Plan, which covers the Campbellton area and some of this project is, is on that land. We've talked about how some additional process will be needed in order to develop that land as proposed, meaning not having the buffers. There are several processes we can go through. I think it'll be a cooperative. I'm expecting a cooperative process considering the city has adopted that Campbellton plan and expressed the way they want things to happen up there. That process will need to take place before things can happen in the way the city's already said wants to happen up there. So I'm expecting it to be a pretty simple process. Had a public hearing with the, in the planning commission meeting and the planning commission recommended approval with the conditions, vote with six to one. Since that meeting, several new items have, have come, come to light. The historic commission has recommended some additional conditions and council, council member Low has recommended a condition. That's what Ron passed out here just a little bit ago. I'd love to run through those if, 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 if you would like. The one from council member Low is a requirement for some agriculture to take place. So it states no less than 200 acres of open space will be dedicated to active, non-forestry agriculture. two hundred acres of open space will be dedicated to active, non-forestry agriculture uses to be mapped no later than the issuance of the project's first land disturbance permits. At least one hundred acres of this agricultural land must be identified as prime agricultural soil. So they've had a soil study done. Most of that prime soil is in the river floodplain. And they've actually, the applicant has, the applicant has seen all these and, and as said, they're okay with them. The, they checked with MRP, the folks at ARC who administer MRP and, and have confirmation that agriculture won't be a problem, or MRP won't cause a problem with, with agriculture on that, on that property. So from the Historic Commission, the next three are basically from the Historic Commission. The, the last one and the second one really could kind of be combined into. But the second one is the Historic Commission shall be included as a consulting party on each site assessment done prior to the submission of each future concept plan. The final site assessment for each phase shall be shared with Historic Commission to allow input in the development of the concept plan. The concept plan, including the site assessment, shall be provided to the Historic Commission for review and comment no less than forty-five days prior to its presentation to the planning commission. So Planning Commission makes a recommendation. Of course, concept plan comes to city council for, for approval. If I may next skip down to the last one, because this is very much related, it came out of the discussion with the Chair of the Historic Commission on, on some of the intent of that, of that one. If an application for a preliminary plat is based on a concept plan approved more than two years prior, the application also must include a site assessment update consistent with the requirements in UDC subsection four dash six dot C dot one site assessment. So that's, that's where the, the requirements for a site assessment are laid out for concept plan applications. So basically, what this means is preliminary plats that come, because this is a long-term project. It'll, some of these preliminary plats, they have a concept plan approval proposed in the conditions, right, that may last them for over a decade, you know, depending on how long this development takes, right? Conditions can change. And so they'll be required to reassess the sites as their preliminary plats come in, right? The area covered by that preliminary plat, and if anything's changed from that original site plan, which can happen over time, right? There are reassessments of floodplains, buildings can, you know, historic buildings can fall down. You might have new species of plants or animals living there. Those sorts of things can happen over time. So it just means that they, they will update that and will have more real information to work from. For what it's worth, I am planning to propose this as a text amendment in the future in our next round of text amendments, so that all, this would apply to, to anyone. But I wanted to go ahead and get it in the conditions here, because this in particular is a long-term project where it's specifically applicable. And then finally, the, the last one, the third one in this bulleted list, any significant features associated with historic Campbellton, including archaeological sites, shall be protected from demolition or destruction until the Historic Commission or its designee has had sixty days to document them. The Historic, Historic Commission will be provided with sixty days to document any other historic or culturally significant features of the property prior to structural alteration, demolition, or destruction. Upon consultation with Historic Commission, extant features from historic Campbellton that will remain on-site should be developed in a way to allow for boundary demarcation signage and where feasible access to allow the features to serve as educational amenities for the community. So the proposal is to add those to the nine existing pages of condition. And I'm happy to run through any of those conditions if you would like. It'd take a long time to read through them all, but some of them are boilerplate. You see on, on other hamlet applications and some of them very specific regarding trails and river access.
Like twenty-five of those.
Hey, Mike, how big is that equestrian center?
I'm, I'm sorry.
How many acres is the equestrian center itself?
The overall application?
The equestrian center, the current, the current place where they, they do the horse shows.
Eastern area is two thousand acres. They don't use all of that for equestrian. I would have to ask the landowner if they have a measurement.
About three hundred acres. One thing I would like to propose as a condition of the council's approval, to propose that the existing facility be preserved, protected and promoted by a new not-for-profit organization funded by a two percent transfer fee, much like what Serenby has for the art farm. The equestrian, I would hate to see that leave in its hole, but I think that aside from Serenby, the largest contributor to tourism in our city, has been that, has been the equestrian and the certain activities that take place on that farm. So I would like to have that permanently preserved and continue going. And it can be funded by a two percent transfer fee, which would take care of it.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
On?
I didn't know.
On that?
Just generally speaking.
I don't know what you're talking.
Rezoning that we're talking about.
I'd, on number four, the site map will serve as the concept plan. I'd, and maybe you can direct us elsewhere, Mike, but can you speak to the, to the subject of the sequencing? I mean, this is a huge, huge project that only has a moderate amount of detail about the first phase. And at one of the great presentations they put on, they, there were, there initially, when we saw this, there were no, a numbered sequence of, you know, we're going to develop phase one, two, three, four. And we still talk about them in numbers. But I was given to understand that as conditions may change, we get, we might get different sequencing come, come about. And specifically asked about engineering, that the, you know, what was said was that I think the availability of utilities might cause a shift, for example, to the Parkway adjacent southern part earlier than the far future, at which it's kind of ambiguously laid out here. So can you speak to sequencing and, and how that factors here? Because we're sort of, we're sort of being asked to agree to this, the entirety with the idea that, oh, there's no detail of, of, in the far future part, which is a location which might actually get bumped up in the sequence realistically, according to.
Right, right. And so they would have to provide then that detail. In fact, they'd have to, so because it's such a big project, there are different levels of, of planning in different phases, right? Yes, they've identified seven phases. The first six in the east planning area up at the north, each with about five hundred homes and some, some non-residential uses. The seventh is in that central area, about a thousand homes. That's what they provided, the detail, and that's what the concept plan covers. So anything beyond that, if they had to move, say, down to the Parkway, they have to do DRI and new concept plan approval by council before they could move forward on that. If you're talking about resequencing within those seven.
We'll hand out to Aiden. I just want to make sure that we're, that we have, you know, I want people to hear that we are, that we're diligently covering the possibility of, of a, you know, tectonic shift in the shape of the project, which is very possible.
It is possible. I think with any big project, multi-phase project, there's always the chance the market, some years down the road, will ask for a different piece to happen. And so these things can be, can be resequenced. When you're talking about the east planning area and the central, I'm not sure how much a different sequence would have an impact on, on the general public, particularly those first six that are in the east planning area. It's all the same, generally the same access points. It would affect potentially when the Campbellton portion of it would, would happen. And that, that could have a public impact. Central planning area, it's hard to imagine the central planning area moving forward just because it's fairly remote and, you know, getting utilities out there and everything, right? I would think that would naturally happen later in the process. It would be, probably make the most sense to go ahead and fill in before you get out there. But again, since it is so remote, again, not, not a lot of impact on, on the rest of the, the rest of the city, if that happened to move forward. But yeah, you would have to approve anything that started to happen down at the Parkway, or say in that western plan, say they wanted to do the golf course next, right, after phase two or something. All that would have to come back with the traffic studies and council's approval on that plan.
Mike, one thing I'm concerned about too is the, the economic development impact. You know, I've got this, this is a project summary, what this is. You got a copy of that?
The.
Thirty-four pages.
Yeah.
Goes over the numbers, all that stuff. You know, after thirty-three pages of promises, go to the last page. Says this research may contain prospective financial information, estimates or opinions that represent our view of reasonable expectations at a particular point in time. Such information, estimates, or opinions are not offered as predictions or assurances that a particular outcome will occur. Actual results achieved during the period covered by the prospective analysis may vary from those described in our research and report. Variations may be material. Therefore, no warranty or representation is made by these, that any projected values or results contained in the work product for this assignment will actually be achieved. So when I read that, it's like you give me thirty-three pages, then on page thirty-four, you give me a disclaimer that says, well, if we screw it up, we're out. We can't promise you this, you know? So what I, what I want to know is, I want a request from DMV copies of their last ten reports for their developments. I want, I need to trust but verify. Because on page forty, thirty-four of this document, if anybody's seen it, it's a project of summary, i- it's very clear, no warranty or representation is made by DMV that the project values or results contained in the work product will actually be achieved. Previous economic development reports to determine whether the results match the projections. If this is yes from DMV, that's what I would like to see. I would like to see reports for developments that took place with the projections and see where they stand now. I know that Lori Cyril posted something, talked to somebody on the phone, whatever, but I would like to see a document is what I would like to see. This is a massive project. On page twenty-eight, the annual net fiscal benefit projects ninety-eight million of tax surplus. That is tax collections in excess of required services is what that is. Does DMV have examples of similar achievements? It is reasonable to accumulate such a large surplus at the expense of our taxpayers. This is taxpayer money. That's where it's coming from.
What?
The report consistently uses a forty percent markup on municipal services, which municipalities enjoy such a robust service? Or is it more reasonable that tax revenues will simply cover actual cost? That's what we don't know. We've done so many different things and the numbers don't match. And these are huge numbers. Projections are, I think, a hundred and fifty-one million dollars over, once all this is built out with our percentages. And I would like to see some verification of what you've put in this document, considering you put a disclaimer in the end, says if we've got it all wrong, don't blame us. Can you provide those for?
We're talking about this project in Chattahoochee Hills. I'm not sure in a rezoning here.
There's, to be clear. We're all aware of that. What I'm asking about is, well, I don't need to repeat it. Did you understand what I was asking for, sir?
I, I mean, I.
Everybody heard you.
Yep.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I just wanted to make two things clear really quickly. One, if you've ever looked at one of these economic impact reports, they always have boilerplate at the end saying something like, we can't guarantee any of this, because that's a fact. You're looking thirty, fifty years into the future, and you can't guarantee what's going to happen thirty or fifty years in the future. You can't tell what's going to happen to the economy two months from now. But this is the best guess by people that are educated and paid to do this kind of thing for a living. One. Two, our zoning process doesn't require an economic impact report. That was an extra that we got. And just to be clear, right? So this isn't a part of our process. This is something extra that we got to help us understand the impact of something like this. Thank you very much for supplying that. But just to be clear, this is not one of our normal steps. And the third piece of this is something that we all saw in a response to a letter today from Robbie, just a reminder of the example that we currently have of this in the city, where one of our districts provides more than half of our tax base, because it's a mixed-use development of the type that we're talking about here. They are very revenue positive. Private streets that we don't pave and all the other things, utilities that are brought in by Fulton County, Atlanta watershed, we don't, you know, it's not our cost. Somebody asked at some point about schools. Fulton County Schools right now gets millions and millions of dollars out of Chattahoochee Hills that don't go to schools in Chattahoochee Hills, right? So as the population grows and they come to build schools here, we've talked to the school board, they're ready to go. They know that they can build schools here. This is, this is something that we've already seen evidence of the ground. So just to be clear, it's not a requirement. It's typical language for this kind of study. And we've already seen the examples of how mixed use works for us from a revenue perspective, just to put people a little bit at ease. We've talked about this stuff a lot, by the way.
Good. Well, who's we there? Because.
We talk about the, the tax things that happen here a lot. I bring it up in probably every other meeting, just to be clear.
I think in this case, the, the scope of the project and the, and the, the vast array of, of unknowns that are just native to anything having to do with this kind of scope and timeline and so on, you know, create anxieties in people. People, people are very worried about the traffic impacts. They're very worried about the potential financial impacts. They're very, I, I had a neighbor this afternoon on, just mentioned in passing, and we weren't even talking about this, but mentioned that, you know, anxiety around, around commuting, anxiety around the preservation of his life as he lives it and so on. But the, but that, that writ large across the many concerns that have been voiced, you know, I think, I think we're facing a lot of unknowns. I think the financial impact study is, is very, very rosy looking, very, you know, and I went back and forth with Robbie. Robbie did, did, did good service in going back and forth and talking to me about it. But for example, just to take those examples, and Robbie and I went back and forth over them, the idea that of the, the schools, well, of course Fulton County is raring to go because this is a giant tax farm for Fulton County. It's going to boost all kinds of revenue. But there's anxiety about what, what, you know, what we get in, in, in exchange for, for, for that. I think, I think the schools issue is probably more complicated than just, than, than just they're raring to go. I think understanding what our obligations really will be, you know, we, we're going to get tons of tax revenue, but there's very little solid information that's certainly been shared with me as a council decision maker. I think that all of us would know what the projections are for, what those, what the liabilities to the city really are. And I don't feel confident, told about that. And, and, and I, so I think those kinds of projections, because they, well, never mind the, the anxiety about property taxes, which is running very high right now because of the heightened estimates that everybody has received, which is an effect of, of, of rezonings and development. And so, so I think these are real anxieties that people have and real unknowns. I think we could, I, we could certainly enhance public confidence by instead of saying, well, Serenby uses, you know, we have a hamlet that shows that hamlets are revenue positive. Sure, I've, I've supported that and other, other rezonings along the way. But this one is so big, nine Serenbys. And the, the, the effect of it is greater than the sum of its parts, as I mentioned, because it's, it's nine Serenbys plus schools plus orders of magnitude traffic and which raises public safety concerns from, that, that are public safety officials, you know, need, need to be thinking about. And so I don't, I don't think it's fair to just say, ah, it's all taken care of with the report, which is extra. I think, I think it really would restore a lot of public confidence to get a, a, a really serious set of projections that, that accounts for things. Like you said, we don't know what the economy is doing in two months.
So you can't.
We, so you can't. But you're saying, you know, you say you can't, so we shouldn't do it.
No, no. What I'm saying is.
Do it.
What I'm saying is that these things, and, and this is not just something that you can see in Serenby. And again, we've talked about this over twenty years so many times. And I apologize if it feels old hat to me and not to you, but mixed-use development like this is the most tax-positive style of development that there is. And other than some industrial uses, which we don't want here anyway. And so, you know, that's something that's proven again and again all around the country. And so there's no expectation that that would be different here. Sure, economy will say, whether it's, you know, twenty thousand extra people in thirty years or fifty years, but it's, it's not something that you can say, next week, we're going to have to build a school, right? It's going to happen as. It's gonna happen as the people move in based on how these things actually sell.
Sure, and, yeah.
And we know that they pay for themselves as they come, because we've seen it happen already. And this is the way that mixed use works pretty much anywhere in the country that you do it. Charlotte is full of it and they've done the studies there too, I mean.
Right, but at the scale that this is, and, and you, and you, you raised, you raised that, uh. Matter well there, the, there are these variables, we, is, is. Have you all, uh, do you all have projections to share for the likelihood of, of. This thing actually developing out? Far for the course here, but the, but, um, and our, and, and with that, then. Do we understand all the contingencies for, for what happens if, for example. Something, you know, something does happen, that's, so, you know, do we get another oh-eight stall, do we, you know, whatever it is? Do, do we understand what those contingencies are, I mean, ev- everyone on this board here has, has. Noted that, you know, when something fails, you have this giant construction hole in the middle of your city. Uh, you know, that, uh, I think those kinds of things are worth thinking about and understanding what the various contingencies are. And, and all we have really is, uh, by, you know, like, we don't really have a. Comparison or study, yeah, some, a few apples to oranges gestures at comparison so far. And so I, I find myself very anxious about this because we're, we're, you know, we're the council that's being. You're taking this momentous forever and ever amen change to the city. So I don't think it's too much to ask for, for more information.
Bill, so any thoughts?
I was just gonna clarify one, one thing, I think, I don't, it's not nine Serenby's, that would be eighteen thousand acres, I think. Right, because Serenby's would be two thousand, so we're talking, I'm just, I just wanna make sure that folks have the facts. Because, right, so it'd be four Serenby's, eight thousand acres.
Well, let me rephrase and just say, th- this is being called a.
No, no, go ahead, non, so did you mean non-phases? You may have meant non-phases.
But by the scope of each phase, what I would say is, maybe I shouldn't have said nine Serenby's, there's a me participating in the loose analogy, I'm sorry. But the, um, but we're being, you know, this is a quote-unquote hamlet. And I have, I have some questions about hamlet, the hamlet village stuff too, but the, but it's a quote-unquote hamlet, that's nine hamlets in a golf. Uh, you know, with Parkway Retail, and so it's much more than a hamlet. And shouldn't be assessed as, it, you know, snap our fingers, eh, this looks like another. We just, on a much smaller hamlet, uh, put a six-month hold. To gain more information, uh, on a, on what is by comparison a tiny ham on Rico Road.
Well, I'm, mhm, I'm sorry, you done?
No, you're good.
I, I also wanted to clarify one thing, I think Richie was talking about the barn at Serenby. And the art farm does not own the barn, the barn at Serenby, that's a, I believe the town is a. At the barn, I think, either way. The art farm doesn't own the barn. It's a private facility.
Okay.
Just, as we're trying to, I mean, yeah, right, cause the, just understanding the financial structure.
Yeah, cool, um, I'll say this, you know, guys, I've been, I've been out there a while for about the last week or two talking to people. And, um, thi- this, this what Scott said, this, this is monumentous, this, this takes its place from thirty-five hundred people to, who knows? You know, I've got a sheet of paper here that says the average family's two-point-three people, means nobody's having kids, I think it's about three-point-sevens.
No, it's two-point-three.
Is it, okay, well, maybe they aren't having kids. But either way, what, what you've got here is you've got nine individual projects is what you've got. And you've already have a good example of the economy. It took ten years Cedar Grove Estates and the other neighborhood filled out. We know right now in this country, you got more houses for sale, you got people willing to buy them. And, um, you know, our goal here as a city is to preserve, preserve, preserve. I've never heard anybody say they want to get rid of the seventy-thirty. What I've heard people say is, we need to get some land in preservation, that's what I keep, keep hearing people say. Um, so that piece needs to be worked out, you know, like, like Scott said, we were given forty-one powers as a city. We have not taken time out to execute some of them. We have not taken time out to execute some of those boards that need to be put in place. You know, we, we have a right to a sewer ordinance, we have a right to a tree ordinance, right to a water, right to solid waste, right to. An ethics policy which has yet to be created. Um, we'll be talking about that later, environmental protection, condemnation. Everybody knows what that is, the power to exercise intimate domain. Everybody knows I've been, um, harping on these traffic studies, I was personally offended when that one showed up. Um, that, in my opinion, was kept from us, cause it was asked for for years. And I don't think they're communicating with the citizens. Matter of fact, after being out there on the street for about a week, talking to citizens, um.
Richie, let's, let's see. We're, I mean, come on, we got, we got a meeting starting in a half an hour, you've got three.
We do, we're talking about this project right.
No, we're talking about.
Correct, that has a lot to do with it. Okay, well, we'll do that, we'll stick to the zoning. Let's review some of the P and Z questions, um, whether the zoning proposals will result in use. Which will or could cause an excessive burden, some use of utilities, public facilities or schools. Um, the answer that was given was constructing the capacity to provide needed services. Cities, the economic study on additional taxes for schools, nothing on water, sewer, gas or electric. That's, that's verbatim, it doesn't make sense, but it wasn't even an answer. Nor was there any due diligence on the proposed cost or timing of these expenditures. You know, when you're developing something this big, there's timelines in place, that's the way it works. Um, the economy does slow down some of it every now and then, but if you can get it done, get it done. I've seen no analysis to verify this, I've seen no revenue or cost. Is the application consistent with the comp plan? No, not in a lot of ways, it is not. What we've done is we have a lot of open-ended statements in our comp plan, just like the law, depending on which way you read it, depends on which way you can apply it. That's what it amounts to. The letter from the county only commits to one additional pumping station. They've made that real clear, um, page six of the water section D refers to that. I don't know if that's gonna be capable to handle everything at that magnitude. What I do know is I did reach out to a few other larger cities and we talked about a project of this magnitude. And it was made very clear that when something like this takes place, you have people from all these departments. They generally come down to your city and they give you a presentation. Just like Greta, they would come down and say, hey, they would say, if you pass this project, these are the twenty-six roads that are gonna be changed. Okay, so it's just that simple, you know, when, 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 um. Mister Richardson brought an N O D forward, yeah, he, he found out about his property. There were twenty-five other people that had no idea their property was on the list either. That's not transparent, that's not transparent at all. No, the one that Mister Richardson and his family went over to Palmetta and retrieved after three years of asking for.
Even though it was on our website, yeah, go on.
Anyway, um. Let's see here. In the agreement, and, and you'll say, we're gonna cover this, um, this agreement a little bit too, we'll get back to that. The applicant suggests that the current R L zoning is incongruent with the policies and the intent of the comprehensive plan. An absent of rezoning, the economic use is impaired. You don't like our plan, but you wanna rely on it, I don't understand that. That's basically what that says. And also, of course, you know, you've got Tyrone versus Tyrone, everybody's familiar that, we've been getting the law read to us. In, in the Georgia Supreme Court, the town, town of Tyrone versus Tyrone LLC court found that the evidence that the property will be more valuable. If rezoned, orders on being irrelevant. Um, changing zoning is not a right, it's a privilege, the critical issue is the value of the land is zoned. Rezoning is considered a relevant according to Tyrone versus Tyrone. Why is your property impaired using Georgia law? Saying the property is impaired, I have no idea why it's impaired, a lot of it's been cleaned off and raped, who knows? But the fact is. My biggest concern is with a project of this magnitude, you don't plan ahead. What you're doing is you're planning to let somebody else come in and tell you how to run your town. That's what you're doing, every road you got's two, two lanes. Every, every cross, every, every, every crossway in our roads, every four-way stop. Could be a victim of a roundabout, who knows, this is all done with a math equation. It's simply traffic count, that's the way it works. Um, you know, as I was reviewing some of Scott's, uh, proposals not too long ago, you know, he had twenty-two changes as, uh, for a process. I think we've gotten through two or three. There is so much we need to get in order before we move forward. But if you want to, we can always look at the, um. The development agreement. Which my book is three-hundred-and-forty pages, I guess, so give me a minute while I flip to it. The, um. These agreements, guys, these development agreements, in my opinion, from speaking to lawyers too. They establish city, city policy to a certain extent, okay? I allow, you know, i- i- if they allow me to build an extra house on my land, fifty feet from my other house. Chances are, i- if Robbie argues for the same thing, he's gonna get it. Can't give it the one and not give it to the other. Um. This agreement establishes city policy by contract. This is a contract, this is an agreement, not passive input, not by the way of a vote, not by the way of a hearing. Um, not by even drafting ordinance, simply establishes precedent. All weather developers will cite this agreement and this will become the law. What about the people's policy? If you go to the agreement, the development agreement, you'll see where it says. Says the project is expected to include eighty-three, eighty-four residential dwellings, eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-four. Based on the acreage of the property and transfer of development rights controlled by the owner and up to one million, one-hundred-sixty-five-thousand square feet. Of non-residential area. That's not on the map. You didn't apply for a village, these are hamlets, those numbers suit a village. Or if you look at it as being nine individual hamlets, it's just, you know, to protect ourselves from the economy, that's what it should be. We've already had that example happen twice, infrastructure put in, roads put down, the economy went in the dumpster, two areas set basically blight. For ten years, thank goodness there weren't a couple homes put up there. Um, cause they'd have probably gotten destroyed. Now, if you go to where it says, section. Under minor adjustments. I don't understand why these are minor adjustments. Adjustments to internal lot lines, building footprints, access configurations.
Because moving your driveway from one side of a lot to another is a minor change. What a development agreement does is it lists out the restrictions on all of the other things that aren't detailed out in your zoning. It's an agreement between you and the developer to make sure everybody's clear on the fact that you can move a driveway from one side of the lot to the other or whatever. It does also, by the way, go through this process, public hearings and then get voted on by the council, so it, you know, is, is a thing that is. Not just extra, it's a part of this process that we're doing.
Let's, Mike, have a.
Look in the agreement under. The water and sewer. The city shall not be responsible for any construction treatment, maintenance or cost associated with water services to the property. Owner or developer shall have the limited right to construct wells on the property. Potable water for temporary service prior to construction or permanent water. Approved by this system, such as septic tanks, may be utilized for limited use in remote areas as approved by the director of the community. That is Mike Morton, so he gets to co- uh, control all the water, how that stuff is done. Once passed on this thing right here, once passed, no changes can be made. This is a contract that you're making with this developer. And you're not making it with Carl Buchardt. Carl Buchardt is going to be selling this land. I don't know how many different people are gonna come in there and buy it and build on it. I know the person that was originally gonna build those two neighborhoods did not get the chance to finish them out. Wind up with the bank of Griffin and somebody bought him and then Lindsay did what he did. This, this agreement. I'm not gonna bore you with all of it. It has a reversion condition in it. Things don't go right, the property can reverse right back, what does it go back to, A G one rule? The reservoir property, um, the reservoir's not coming, folks, it's got a, I guess about thirty years left on its, uh. Corps of Army Engineers, uh, they put a moratorium on it, pretty lake on that map will not show up in your city.
Part of the project.
Historical Campbellton Crossroads. Developer and owner shall pursue the ability with the city and the city of South Fulton to develop. Portion of the property in alignment with the historic, uh, framework of that plan. City of South Fulton's gonna do what they wanna do.
No, actually, we put a plan together with them through that L C I study that they adopted and we adopted. And what they're saying is that they're agreeing to work inside of that plan. The city council adopted unanimously, and so did the city of South Fulton.
Correct, well, after having phone calls with them, um, everybody knows what goes on at City of South Fulton, no sense of getting in or, in, in that conversation.
When we ask our city, what we do.
Yeah, I'm gonna interrupt you for just one second.
River corridor protect.
Can I interrupt you for just one second, just one second?
Sure.
So, we're gonna start our council meeting at six o'clock. And we have to continue to have this conversation in this part of that meeting. Uh, if we want to talk about the other three items that were on our work session agenda, we might wanna move to those. And continue this conversation when we get to this item in the regular session. Or if we wanna skip those and keep talking about this until six o'clock, that's fine with me too, I am happy to do what the council would prefer.
I think we need to respect the citizens, we can postpone the rest of this to, um, the actual meeting itself. But I think it's disrespectful just to keep running over and over when we have a schedule.
But you had an agenda item on the, on the work session agenda, what's your preference?
I'll, I'll defer to the group, if Richie wants to continue, um, we, and, or we can. Go back to the work session.
Um, I think. We've got some work that should.
And I'm not, I'm not saying not to say anything you wanna say, I'm just saying, let's, let's, if we wanna talk about these other items in the work session, we need to get there now.
Yeah.
Uh, and if we don't, then I'm fine putting those to next month and we can keep talking about it.
I don't have something on, I do not have something on the work session agenda, so it's whoever.
Given, given the remaining time.
She's, now you're doing on just the.
Somebody do something about this damn system.
I couldn't hear you, Scott.
Yeah, I can't hear anything. We're still in the meeting agenda review, we've got fifteen, fifteen minutes with a five-minute break. And we have permitting board, ethics ordinance policy and ongoing processes. The ongoing process is number four is, is, is to, uh, share, assert, to circulate. Uh, language to supplement the city circulated, uh, G M A, uh, generic. Uh, uh, ethics ordinance that, uh, that is circulated in the packet. And, uh, and I don't think we can discuss that adequately, uh.
Honestly, right?
In fifteen minutes, um. But, but certainly we need to continue discussing some of the stuff that, um. That, that, that we've been on in these other items, uh, so prob- probably the best thing to do. Is to, uh. To give Councilman Schmidt the, uh, the opportunity to return to, uh, discussion item two. Discussion on forming a permitting board and I will, uh. And I will, uh, I will accept the furl, uh, of my item, which, and Rick, uh, uh, item three appears to be in anticipation of the discussion that I was proposing in four on ethics ordinance. So perhaps you and I could agree to, um, to circulate suggested language that I brought and some questions and, um, put it on the agenda for, as a, maybe, maybe first instead of last next month. Okay.
Well, and again, this, this is a pretty impactful. Do you want to do the permitting board thing now or you want to get looking on this?
Guys, I'll end it with this. A, a, a big, a big concern, you know, the city of Atlanta, you know, the guy told us in plain English, there's no water coming. They're not putting in the infrastructure. Okay? Um, basically said that building has come to a halt in this area. Now, what generates that is a permit. Permit doubles the land. It allows you to go after government dollars and everything else. What you have to decide, what I have to decide is I, I, I don't have a problem with anybody having a dream, wanting to do what they want to do. I get it. But does one man's dream constitute the ability to disrupt 3,500 people's lives? I don't think so. My way of life is not up for sale. I'm not looking to sit in traffic for another 20 minutes. If you attended Marvin Arrington's town hall meeting about taxes, what you would have saw is several people that came in here and made it real clear their taxes went from 12 to 24. One guy's jumped over 20,000 and it was made very clear. Development raises taxes. Development at this stage raises taxes. What, you know, we need to have two conversations in my opinion. What kind of development do we want? There's development and then as, as, uh, his representative said, this is a metropolis is what this is. Exactly what it is. Is that what we're looking for? I don't think so. That's not what I've heard from anybody. Um, so I just feel very strongly that the processes aren't in place. You have to realize in 12 weeks, the last 12 weeks, we've worked on the village, we've worked on Rico. Now I've been handed another 350 pages. Nobody in their right mind can say in 12 weeks, living their lives, dealing with their jobs, their kids, whatever they do. They had adequate time to read all this and completely understand it. And that's why a lot of the other cities made it real clear. They have the experts come down to the room. They don't tell us, we spoke to them and this is what they said. They have them come down, explain it to the people in an open forum, do Q and A, all that good stuff. So everybody has a big, complete understanding. It's just that simple. We haven't followed due process all the way. Lot of this stuff, in my opinion, has not been created for a reason. And you're seeing that, just like you don't have an ethics board, is what it is. Okay, that's, that's all I got for now. Thank you.
Right. Uh, so the good news is we do have a process, awesome process. We're following it right now. And we will continue to do that through this evening. Uh, looking forward to the rest of that conversation. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on this? Or shall we move on? So happy then to go to whichever item. Scott, I, I appreciate your offer to defer your stuff because to your point, we can't have a thoughtful conversation about it in the time that we've got. Uh, Richie, do you want to talk about the permitting thing or? Do we have enough time for that? Or do we want to just defer it and take a couple minute break and then come back and start it, fix clean?
I think that's up to Councilman Schmidt.
That's, I'm asking him.
I, I would just, um, I honestly think it's going to need a, um, probably going to need a workshop. Probably to do the ethics and everything else. Um, I, I'll just say this, um, the permitting board, what we'll be discussing, um, the reason I'm bringing this up is this is a, this is a great way to help streamline things in the city. It gives you a third set of eyes. It gives you oversight. Um, some of the things that it really benefits you with is it streamlines all communication. You have a permitting board of five to seven people who literally have a permit in their hand, but was given to them by the city. Um, it gives them the ability to do checks and balances, which are important, to meet timelines, to make sure if something's wrong, they can bring that to council. Everybody knows here, we don't have code enforcement to a certain extent. We have, uh, complaint enforcement. Somebody complains, we deal with it. Um, so the benefit of a permitting board is, is just that. Everyone is, uh, currently wondering how all these things get to where they are. I think it's because we're, we're lacking some boards that we need. Um, what it does, it ensures compliance, it enforces zoning, it enforces preservation and environmental values. It oversees the proper recording of permits. It facilitates reporting to the public, which means if you're on the permitting board and you go out to a project and you say, hey, look, they took a right when they were supposed to take a left and they're bulldozing here and they weren't supposed to. You can come back and let us know. Bring us a photo. Then we can decide what to do. Are we dealing with the developers following the rules or do we need to go out there and babysit them? And, uh, we know in this town, we've, we've had a few problems here and there. Uh, facilitate reporting to the public and enable public disclosure. Disclosure is huge. And I will say this is, um, well, that's fine, guys. It's going to be a lot further discussion. But, um, I'll just give you a brief overrun of it. That's all I had for that. And I'll draw up some more stuff, but it's something we can put together in about a week to protect ourselves and it would definitely help out the planning guys.
I don't know.
It's interesting is that presumes that Daryl is not checking every day to see whether the bulldozer went left or right. We, we have professionals doing that work right now, but politicizing it, it doesn't sound like the best idea.
Yeah.
Hope it works, right?
But he does a lot of development review too. We're going to go ahead and break until the meeting, which starts at 6 o'clock. See you then. So Diane, we'll just roll those.